Everyone and welcome to the ordinary meeting of Mount Isa City Council. The time is 9am and I now declare the meeting open. Mount Isa City Council would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet, the Kalkadoons, and pay respects to elders past, present and emerging. And I'd also like to extend that respect to any of Australia's First Nation people that are in attendance today. Please note that this ordinary meeting of the Mount Isa City Council may be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with the council's recording of council meetings policy. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in chambers, it is assumed that your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. I'd like to kick off with an ask Pastor Tim Grant from the Baptist Church to grace us with a prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. And just a quick word from Psalm, Chapter 9. I will give thanks to the Lord with my whole heart. I'll recount all of your wonderful deeds. I'll be glad and exalt you. I will sing praise to your name, O Most High. Almighty God and merciful Father, we thank you for creating this world and placing us here as your stewards so that we can serve you and others. Grant us humility and thankful hearts as we commit ourselves to the tasks that you have prepared for us. We thank you for the men and women who have committed themselves to this important role, serving in council. In Romans, call such people servants for your good. And Christians are commanded to pray for our leaders that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. And so, Lord, I commit the men and women in this room to you. Grant them wisdom, integrity, creativity and resolve, along with peaceful rest and peaceable sleeps. May they work in unison so that our region may flourish, that it may provide a home and employment for many people, and that it would be a blessing to our nation and the world because of what is produced in this area. And please help Mayor Daniel Slade and the councillors navigate difficult issues with grace, understanding and reason. And please keep these people before me from falling into the temptation of working for their own personal gain. Help them serve the people under their care for your glory. And Lord, we commit other people in our area to you as well, medical staff, police, emergency workers and teachers. Give them grace as they commit themselves to these important roles. We ask for the students in the classroom today that you would give them good behaviour and to work and learn and commit themselves to learning today. Or you especially ask for your grace to those in this area who are sick or grieving or suffering. We ask that they would know your comfort and have the strength to persevere in their particular situations. We pray for workers and business owners. We ask that you'll provide your wisdom to them and help them with their daily challenges. We ask for people like stay-at-home parents, that they might have patience caring for young children and people under their care. And for those who are unemployed and wanting to work, that by your grace you'll provide suitable and sustainable employment. And Father, you're aware that this region depends significantly on the mines. So we ask that they might have a good production for their labours and that many people in this area would benefit from that industry. And so, Father, as this council meeting continues, grant that their decisions may be based on wise counsel so that a peace and welfare, truth and justice may prevail among us and make us a blessing to the districts around us. We ask this through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Tim, and thank you for making that prayer relating to Mount Isa and the Mount Isa City Council. I really appreciate the time that would have gone into that. Thank you. For item three, which is apologies and leave of absence, would someone like to move the motion that council accepts and notes the apology of councillor George Fortune? Thank you, councillor Tully. Can I get a second for that motion?
McCray.
Thank you, councillor McCray. All those in favour? And that's carried. We did have a presentation we wanted to do, but we're going to put that after the deputation. So I'd just like to start with the public participation, and that is with Godfrey Croats.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, councillors, CEO. I have two items. The first one is I'd like to follow up on two of my service requests. One I put in in April, which in my opinion is a safety thing. The North Road East, yes, there's a fence that's been flattened. I got told in the past you couldn't get materials in time when it would be done once you get the materials. I put that request in April, and now we're, well, the end of August. Surely the material must be here on site. The other one is crossing of Breakaway Creek at Farnock Street. I saw another car, big four-wheel drive, driving right through in the full daytime. I got told the pipe barrier had been rustled out and the council would put concrete blocks there. Nothing has happened. That's also two months ago. I put that in June. Please let me know what's happening. Why wasn't that job done? Or why weren't the jobs done? On my request, I always tick the box where I would like to be informed what's happening to the jobs. I heard nothing.
I'll hand you over to the CEO, David Keenan.
Through Madam Mayor, I'll go to the Director of Infrastructure, Director Wallace.
I'll hand over to our acting Works and Operations Manager, who can give you an update.
Good morning, all. Are the short street poles between the school and the crossing, it is programmed in the upcoming works to get replaced? Unfortunately, with the traffic and the volume of people that use it, it's not a quick fix to stop the vehicles from crossing over and coming down the river. We are locating large boulders and rocks as you request and blocking them along the way to then prevent and move forward as we go, because every time we set it up, more cars find a different way to access through that. For that's for short street and the St. Kirans.
With respect, that was made for bicycles and pedestrians. And it was a perfectly good accepting that big trucks tried to get around. And council has put barriers along the creek. But now it's a matter of putting three or four metres of concrete wall. You don't have to close the whole walkway.
No, we're leaving roughly a 1.8 metre gap for bikes, wheelchairs, mobility scooters. Everything's still to access it. So we are looking forward, and it is scheduled in the September programme to look at a more permanent solution to fix this for a permanent fixture. As we are now, we are looking at, like I said, boulders and everything to just close it to stop the vehicles from accessing that area. As we place them, they move around the boulders, and we'll just have to keep placing them down the river until we can completely stop the vehicles from accessing. The North Street one, the fence is, it is ordered. We haven't received the material for that fencing to get done yet. Our team are going there weekly or monthly to reconstruct the fencing that is there. It just keeps getting knocked down.
No, you're ill-informed. That fence where it's down has not been touched. The starposts which were broken are still in the same position. Nothing has been done in that area.
It was corrected yesterday.
Well, okay.
Yeah, so.
Fine.
Yes.
I was there two days ago, yes.
And once the material is ordered, again, we will schedule that into our monthly plan.
But hasn't it been ordered yet?
It is ordered, sorry, once the material is received. The way the world is at the moment, I don't want to give an excuse, but getting product out to Mount Isa is not an easy feat at the moment.
I'll have to accept it. I could say otherwise, but it's fine. Thank you. But please let me know when it can be done.
Yes.
Because that's safety. Surely that has priority.
No, we'll do it.
All right, thank you. My second one is usually I go to, on Wednesday and Friday, I go to aerobics classes at the PCYC. Inside the parking lot there is a sign, no exit, going towards the east. It used to be that one could drive out, drive around into the city. Now, I wasn't there. I saw it and stopped. Last Friday, I watched people leaving from the car park. And eight out of 10 cars drove straight through that no sign, no exit sign. I had a talk with the manager of the PCYC. And she supports my suggestion that the council take the no exit sign away and put a give way sign there. That way, that exit will still be safe. And it's a, and people will not get charged by police for going against signage at the car park. Please look into that suggestion. Thank you.
Through Madam Mayor, the Director of Infrastructure, Director Wallace.
Thank you for that. The whole car park in relation to Family Fun Park and PCYC has already previously been identified as areas of improvement in relation to not only parking but also traffic management. So to remove signage, we can't actually just remove signage. There needs to be a design in relation to that so that we can meet traffic management requirements. Traffic management requirements then require a design. So simply removing a sign means that now we're not actually meeting standards for access, egress or access. So if the no exit sign and no entry, there is a no entry, a one-way entry on the other side, and there's a no exit on the other side. So it is indicating to motorists that there is only a one-way. People, if the people are not following it, we have identified that there is an error of improvement. But we cannot go and simply remove a sign and add another sign without an actual design.
How complicated do you want to make the matter? Just now, if you want to do it legally, you have to drive into the traffic, turn left down Raver Avenue, turn right again towards the entrance to the copper smelter, then turn right again into Raver Avenue, then negotiate a lane change and go to the traffic light before you can get into Woolworths or the council.
I agree with you. I absolutely agree with you, but I cannot change something without a proper design.
Well, who's going to design it?
Council. So as I've said, the, I haven't said it yet. When we have identified projects like this, we present them to council as part of a capital works bid. So as part of that capital works bid for next year, there will be identification of this project. So we just, we don't go along and just complete projects. We take them to council and council identifies these projects. So that goes up to council for.
I hear what you're saying, but it's too complicated. You've got a problem there where people today and tomorrow drive out the wrong way. And they could be charged. Why? What's the big deal of changing the sign to a give way? It's still safe.
It's not actually safe. So under Australian standards, we're not meeting the safety requirements. So council is required to follow regulation and safety, and to do that, we have to undertake design. So we have to keep public safe by putting that.
So we have to wait six months before that can be done?
We have to wait for council to approve budget for us to undertake that works.
Council has to approve $100 worth of labour to do that.
No, the design has to be undertaken before any works can be completed.
So are we saying we're waiting for the next?
I'm sorry, but I don't understand the procedures. Thank you.
Thanks, Godfrey. Are we saying we're waiting for the next budget to put that into the?
So it has not been approved in this year's capital budget. So it will need to be approved for next year's capital budget under one of the project bids. And we'll be adding any supporting information or requests to those capital bids.
Thank you. Thanks, Renee. Thank you. Godfrey, one of the things we'll make sure we do is that we'll contact you in regard to when those jobs that you put in are complete. And we might try, and if they're not complete in the next month, we'll give you a status update.
Thank you.
If that's okay. And the other thing is, one of the things I personally think is when you leave the town pool. When you exit the town pool.
Yes.
You have to go up through the lights, go down Barclay Highway, turn around and then come back to go down a little bridge. So maybe with the design, we could actually look at something more holistic with the town pool and PCYC. Because I see people cutting through as well. And that's from the town pool. They cut legally across and.
It's quite, quite all right to go from the swimming pool, park, across the road and drive into town. There's no restrictions. There used to be. I put a service request.
You can't. It's a double line, so you can't, technically not supposed to be able to.
For that particular outlet, it's not a double line. I've been out there about a year ago. About a year ago, there was a no entry sign. I put a service request in. Within two days, that no entry sign was removed.
Are you telling me that I've been leaving the town pool, going up around the lights all the way around and?
You mean from here? You mean from here? You mean from here? That's not what I mean. I'm talking about down this swimming pool and PCYC car.
No, that's what I'm talking about too. So yeah. I believe that when you leave the town pool, you can't cross that line.
Look, I'm aware of the problems.
If we're going to look at a design, it'd be good to look at that town pool, accessing the town pool as well as PCYC. And I'd be keen to.
I won't be caught by police. I will go the long way. But there are many people who don't think.
Thanks, Godfrey. And thank you so much for coming in and raising those issues with us. I really appreciate it. Okay, so that now takes us to the Honourable Tony McGrady, AM, Chair of the Miners Memorial Advisory Committee. Yeah, okay. So we swapped a few things around. So before I start with you, Mr. McGrady, I will just do the casual for course, which is the presentation, and that's.
Okay, today we are presenting the June fundraising for the, from the council, for Bush Kids. Bush Kids is a not-for-profit organisation that has been supporting the health and wellbeing of children and families in Queensland, regional, rural and remote communities for over 80 years. As an organisation that has a local base, council wanted to ensure we supported not only Bush Kids as a whole, but our community through the services that they provide. Bush Kids currently provide a number of free allied health services to children and families, such as speech pathologists, occupational therapists, psychologists and family health support workers. The total raised for today is $212.50.
Okay, now you can hear me. We've got Sharon Tindale from Bush Kids. Sharon, I'll get you to say a few words, but I for one have used Bush Kids, so I know about the service that you provide Mount Isa. At the moment, there's a shortage of everything that the deputy mayor read out at the moment, speech therapists, OT. So an organisation like this is very important. But it's the council staff who have picked you. So that just shows you that you're well-known in the community, and I'm very proud of the council staff. Every Friday, they have casual for cause and they raise this money. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, photo first.
Okay, I'd just like to say thank you to everybody. Like sometimes because we've had a bit of struggle with getting clinicians to Mount Isa, you kind of do feel sometimes that you're a bit isolated. So this was a really pleasant surprise to hear that the council staff have chosen Bush Kids. Yeah, we do whatever we can to help the community. We try and present ourselves to every event. Yeah, hopefully my staffing can improve for the future and we can continue to provide the services that we just talked about. But yeah, I'd just really like to say thank you. Like it was a really, really lovely surprise. So thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. And Matt, this might be a story you need to do about the lack of speech OT that's in Mount Isa. It's a very big issue.
So now that puts us back on track. So the next one is a deputation. It's from the Honourable Tony McGrady, AM, Chair of the Miners Memorial Advisory Committee, and he's present today to give us an update on how that committee is travelling.
Madam Mayor, councillors and council staff, thanks for the opportunity to come here today and address the council on the activities of the Miners Memorial Advisory Committee. Of all the committees which I've been involved with over the years, the Miners Memorial Advisory Committee would top the list as dedication in achieving results. Three of our committee members travel from Brisbane, Townsville and Corumbia at their own expense to attend these meetings. And most or all of the other committee members are certainly dedicated to the ideals of the committee. At the outset of this report of the city council, I want to express my thanks and appreciation to those council staff members who service the committee and are there to help and guide us. And in all sincerity, I appreciate the work of Brian Atharinas and his team. As Chair of the Advisory Committee, I've notified the Premier's Office of the importance of our 100th birthday of Mount Isa, as well as the importance of the 19th of September 2024 Annual Miners Memorial Day Ceremony to be held in Mount Isa, as well as requesting consideration to be given to hold any other suitable events in Mount Isa during our centenary year. The Miners Memorial Advisory Committee, as I've mentioned, have been working hard to ensure that all our plans come to fruition. To get a better representation at the end of, at the request of the committee, I have written to the Australian Workers Union and Commerce Queensland with a view to having representation from these two groups on our committee. Gavin Lawrence, the local organizer from the AWU, has informed me that he would be delighted to join the committee, and Commerce Queensland have nominated Tai Seiko. I accordingly recommend to council that they invite both these people to join the advisory committee. And I understand that will go through normal council channels. We've requested help and assistance from Glencore in selecting a site for the proposed memorial. And they have provided experts from the company to inspect the Frank Ashton Hill to ensure that it is a suitable site if selected, it would be safe and suitable. And we certainly appreciate all the help and assistance and advice which we've received from Glencore. Finance, of course, is an issue which has to be addressed. Our committee have considered a payroll deduction scheme, and we recommended the city council that discussions be entered into with Glencore and other employers in the city and the surrounding area with a view to commencing a payroll deduction scheme to raise funds for the building of the memorial. It should be remembered that the payroll deduction scheme enabled the Laura Johnson Home to be built in our city. And staying on finance, our committee have agreed to request the city council to contact the rodeo committee to request them as a one-off that next year, the rodeo queens, rather than raise funds for various and different organisation, all Queen Emptons raise funds for the proposed memorial. I floated this idea in writing to Natasha Flecker, Natalie Flecker, sorry, and we are waiting for a response. And on behalf of the committee, I would request the city council to pursue this idea. Madam Mayor, my committee realise that we are an advisory committee and we make recommendations to the city council. But often we make direct contact with groups and organisations, but at all times, we seek to work in close cooperation with the city council. My committee believes that it's vital to start to inform the public of the plans for this memorial. And we have discussed the idea of a Facebook page as well as keeping our local media informed of our plans and seeking input from the general public. Madam Mayor, as I stated in my opening remarks, my committee realised that we are an advisory committee to the city council. But I stress amongst our committee members, we have a total commitment to achieving the establishment of this memorial to our deceased miners. And to achieve this, we are anxious and eager to all in our power to see these plans come to fruition. I accordingly firmly request council to consider the requests that I have made to you along with the recommendations. I'm more than happy to answer any questions which you or your councillors may have.
Thank you, Tony McGrady. Was there any questions from that?
I think it's worth noting that the, I actually sit on the advisory committee and they are talking about having the memorial sort of kick off on the 19th September 2024, which is the year that Mount Isa Mines turns 100. So, which is very significant in the fact that that was, these deaths have happened while the mine was operating.
I spoke to the Minister of Resources in Queensland, and he said anything at all you want to do along those lines, just drop a letter to him and he's more than happy to cooperate.
Thank you. That's fantastic. All right, if there's no questions on that, we'll keep going. Thank you so much, Tony McGrady. So that now takes us to item five, which is the confirmation of previous minute meetings. Would someone like to, 5.1, minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 15th of June 2022? Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 15th of June 2022 be received and the recommendations therein be adopted.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Tully. Any comments or questions on this one, Deputy Mayor?
No, fine, thanks. That's right, Madam Mayor.
If there's no more, no comments, all those in favour. It takes us to item 5.2, which is the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 20th of July 2022. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 20th of July 2022 be received and the recommendations therein be adopted.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor McCray. Any comments on this one?
No, thanks, Madam Mayor.
All those in favour. That takes us to item 5.3, which is the minutes of the special meeting held on the 9th of August 2022. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'd like to move that the minutes of the special meeting held on 9th of August 2022 be received and the recommendations therein be adopted.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Barwick.
Thank you. Any comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. 5.4, the minutes of the mine, sorry, the minutes of the Mine Workers Memorial Advisory Committee held on the 23rd of June 2022. Can I get someone to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that the minutes of the special meeting held on 9th of August 2022 be received and the recommendations therein be adopted.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Tully.
Um, just before we go further, I don't know whether to raise it now or not through the chair. The fundraising opportunities, I asked that my objection to the rodeo queen quest be noted, and it hasn't been in the minutes. Okay, it's not there. Remember, I did say that I wanted it noted down. Uh, 5.3.
Uh, 5.4, 5.4, which is the Mine Workers Memorial.
Oh, yeah, sorry, but 5.3 in the minutes. Sorry.
Oh, I see. Yep.
So I can fix that at the next Miners Memorial meeting.
Okay, so we've still put this through and?
Yep.
Through the chair. I've raised recently in other meetings that I think the recommendations here is incorrect in that we're being asked to, from the advisory committee, this is all the advisory committees, we're being asked to receive the minutes and also adopt the recommendations therein. And I don't believe we should be adopting recommendations from advisory committee without backup information and officers' reports. So I would suggest that we, I'd like to move an amendment that we receive the options and put the recommendations through the normal council protocol.
I still think we have to adopt them through a meeting. So you want more time to look at it?
No, no, I think, I think all the recommendations that are in the advisory committee reports, and we've got four of them at the moment, they should be analysed by the staff, and officers' reports should be provided to support the recommendations before we adopt them as a council. Otherwise, we're adopting stuff without being well informed.
And those recommendations councillor Barwick would go back to the advisory committees?
No, they would come back to council for adoption.
So is there an opportunity for us when we have a informal briefing or workshop to get the chairs to come along to the workshop, explain what happened at the meeting and what the resolutions that they were hoping to put through? Is that something we'd like to do because obviously?
Well, I think that that kind of information's there. I think it's more about having the officers analyse that in terms of what council is actually proposing to adopt, what recommendations they are, whether they're good or bad, and what information supporting. Like whenever we get a recommendation from the administration, there's usually a whole raft of information that supports recommendations, and we're well informed when we make those decisions. However, when they come direct from the revisory committee to the council meeting, I don't believe we're in a position to be making decisions on, on information that is not supported by council recommendations.
Yeah, and I-
Council officer recommendations, sorry.
I get what you're saying. Like the ones in this one are pretty, there's nothing that needs analysing. They're pretty, they're pretty easy, you know? They want to change their meetings to monthly. They want to acknowledge the 19th of September 2024.
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor. Deputy Mayor, are you seeking that, rather than the recommendation being there that says and the recommendations therein be adopted, that they be noted?
We know, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we have for 100 years usually.
So if that changes around, that allows that feedback to come through in a separate report from council. Otherwise, I understand where you're coming from. What you're suggesting here is everything's been adopted on block without any discussion. And the resolutions from the advisory committee, and I think it's in the advisory committee policy if I'm not mistaken, suggest that they should only be noted, not necessarily adopted. So it may be that with the consent of the person, the councillor that moved this item that you-
That was me.
Oh, was that you?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, my mistake, I was looking at, oh yeah, the wrong person, too many Ps. If you're suggesting that instead of being adopted, it be noted, that might be an easier outcome and that a council report be brought back after that?
Yeah, look, I also raised this, I think, a couple of meetings ago and under the same proviso that we note the, we note the, and receive the minutes, rather than we, we receive the minutes and adopt the recommendations. Because I just don't think, those things are not workshopped enough, they don't come to council. We need time to have a look at things. I don't, you know, there's, there's things in there that I don't necessarily agree with, but I would like more information on. And that can come from any committee.
So through you, Madam Mayor, it's, it- councillors, you can foreshadow that you're going to, should, should the motion fail that the minutes be adopted, that you foreshadow that you will put up an alternate motion that indicates that the, the minutes will be noted instead of adopted?
Yes, please.
Except it'd be a good idea if you weren't the person, if you weren't the councillor moving this report. So if we can let it get up, and then you foreshadow an alternate recommendation, and then council, if councillors are of the mind to do that, and then they, they can decide whether the new motion is applicable or not.
Okay.
I'd like to go just a little bit further. I would think that that would be a normal recommendation that would be made in future as well.
Agreed.
Not, not to, not to have to do this every time we come to a meeting. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, and look, we have our workshops and our informal briefings, so probably that was a time to address this, not at a meeting. But anyway, we're here now.
Yeah, I did raise it at the-
You did?
At the workshop.
Okay, all right, all right, so we just might note that. I know a few people were away at the last one.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, so, all those in favour?
You needed a second, I'll second, and then we all have to vote.
Okay.
We're going to vote.
Because we actually did have a seconder, because I was asking for comments, and then that's when councillor-
Yeah, someone seconded it.
Someone definitely seconded it because we went into comments.
Councillor Tully, I believe, yeah? Okay.
Someone seconded it because I went to-
Sorry, through you, I've got you down. Councillor Tully, I don't know who you got down.
Let's go back on the live stream.
So it would be, it would be, it would be useful for a councillor other than councillor Barwick or councillor Tully to indicate that they're foreshadowing a, an alternate motion?
I'm foreshadowing an alternate motion.
Should this one fail?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a seconder noted, all those in favour. So for lack of, lack of votes, we are now putting that one, I can't even-
I have an alternate motion I'd like to present.
An alternate motion was foreshadowed by councillor McCray.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to move that the minutes of the Mine Workers Memorial Advisory Committee held on the 23rd of June 2022 be received and the recommended, the recommendations herein be noted.
Streton, second.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Any other comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. That now takes us to the, so we're going to be doing this for the next few minutes? Or do we just, okay. Who would like to move the officer's recommendation of 5.5, minutes of the North West Motorsport Advisory Committee held on the 5th of July 2022?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that the minutes of the North West Motorsport Advisory Committee-
I think we don't want you to move it, is that right?
Through you, again, councillors, if we can follow the same process that we just, that you just undertook then, that would be really helpful.
But, but this one's just received, it's not-
No, it's a document.
No, it's got the same material, yeah.
It's got the same, so I'll need to go back and get that changed. So again, sorry to be a pain, councillors, but if we just go through the same process?
All right, so, sorry, keep going, Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'll move that the minutes of the North West Motorsport Advisory Committee held on the 5th of July 2022 be received and the recommendations therein be adopted.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Tully. Any comments on this one?
I foresee that there'll be a change in motion.
Thank you, councillor McCray. All those in favour?
Sorry, wrong one, too early.
Okay, for lack of votes, we see, foresee a change in motion?
Um, I have an alternate motion. I'd like to move that the minutes of the North West Motorsport Advisory Committee held on the 7th of March 2022 be received and noted.
Seconder for that motion?
Madam Mayor, I think councillor McCray meant 5th of July.
Sorry.
The one above, yeah.
Oh, where am I?
Your down one.
Oh, sorry, 5th of July. Start again. I'd like to move that the minutes of the North West Motorsport Advisory Committee held on the 5th of July 2022 be received and noted.
Thank you, and thank you councillor Streton for seconding that. Any comments now? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. And we'll be in the same situation with this one. So would someone like to move the officer's recommendation of 5.6, the minutes of the Lake Mundara Advisory Committee held on the 2nd of August 2022?
Um, I'd like to move that the minutes of the Lake Mundara Advisory Committee held on the 2nd of August 2022 be received and the recommendations therein be adopted.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Tully. Any comments on this one? Someone foresee?
Foreshadow.
Yeah, I'll foreshadow an alternate motion. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favour? Okay, through lack of votes, we foresee a alternative motion?
I'll move now, Madam Mayor, the minutes of the Lake Mundara Advisory Committee held on the 2nd of August 2022 be received and that the recommendations therein be noted.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor, seconder. Thank, thank you councillor McCray. Any comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Which brings us to 5.7, which is the minutes of the Mount Isa 100 Year Celebration Advisory Committee held on the 2nd of August 2022.
Um, I'd like to move that the minutes of the Mount Isa 100 Year Celebration Advisory Committee held on the 2nd of August 2022 be received and the recommendations therein be adopted.
Streton, second.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Any comments on this one?
Uh, Madam Mayor, again, I foresee an alternate motion on this particular recommendation.
Thank you. All those in favour? Through lack of votes, we have foreshadowed an alternative recommendation?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll move that the minutes of the Mount Isa 100 Year Celebration Advisory Committee held on the 2nd of August 2022 be received and the recommendations therein be noted.
Can I get a second for that motion?
McCray.
Thank you, councillor McCray. Any comments on this one?
Um, no.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to comment that we respect the amount of work that goes into these advisory committees, and the information that comes out of them is very, very valuable. And I think it's, it would be remiss of us not to give it due process when we put these recommendations up, so just, just a comment, thanks.
And through the chair can also comment that a recommendation made from our advisory committee is coming later in the meeting as a separate recommendation with a report to council, so I'll speak to it then.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so that takes us to 6.1, which is outstanding actions from previous council meetings as of the 31st of August 2022. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Also move that the council receives, receives and notes outstanding actions from previous council meetings as at the 31st of August 2022.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Tully. Councillor Coghlan, would you like to speak on behalf of that motion?
No, it's all good, thank you.
Any comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. All right, that brings us to item seven. Do any councillors have any conflicts of interest in regard to the agenda for the ordinary meeting today?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest, 11.7. My sister lives on that road.
And how would you like to proceed with that?
I'll be leaving the room, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Streton.
I also have a declarable conflict of interest that I live on Old Micah Creek Road. A, oh, 11.7, sorry. And I'd like to leave it to the councillors to see if I can stay in the room.
Do we do that now or when we get to that? All right, would someone like to move the motion that councillor Coghlan is allowed to remain in the room for item 11.7?
I'll move, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, seconder for that motion? All those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us to the mayoral minute, which is none. That takes us now to nine, which is 9.1, the correspondence report for July 2022. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Um, I'd like to remove, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the July 2022 correspondence report.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Streton.
Uh, I think councillor Streton was too fast. Councillor McCray, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Um, no, I just note that there's some letters that the mayor has written congratulating the new ministers on their appointment with the new government. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so that now takes us to item 10, which is the executive services reports. 10.1, James Cook University lease over lot 1 on MPH 4559. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, oh, you go. I'll move option one, that council agreed to reissue a lease to James Cook University over land described as lot 1 on MPH 4559, located at 21 Isa Street, Mount Isa, subject to, but not limited to, 1, the lease is for a term of 10 years; 2, the rent be set at $1 per annum if requested, peppercorn; 3, the leaseholder will pay all outgoing costs associated with the lease; 4, the current option to purchase the land at the end of the lease term to be retained; 5, the leaseholder shall be responsible for the costs associated with all services, including, but not limited to, general rates, sewer, water and refuse.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion, please?
Uh, second, Barwick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Coghlan, would you like to speak on behalf of the-
Oh, I'd just like, this is basically exactly the same as the previous lease, and they still have the option to purchase the land. They're paying all costs associated with it, and they do, they are very valuable to what they do for the Mount Isa community. So I'd like to continue to support it.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor. Look, I think this is a great support by council being shown to the local university campus that we have here, and it shows our commitment and seriousness about us wanting higher, supporting higher education opportunities within the city. So I fully support this recommendation.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, all those in favour? Councillor Coghlan?
I'm sorry.
And that's carried. Item 10.2, which is Healy Heights Covenant Variation Request for 86 to 88 Wright Road, Mount Isa. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Okay, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council approves the Healy Heights Variation Request to permit a dual occupancy to be constructed at 86 to 88 Wright Road, Mount Isa, described as lot 108 on plan SP 206675, and permit any driveways to differ from approved locations if required, subject to the following conditions. The following conditions, do you want me to read those out, Mr CEO? Okay, general, number one, the proposal of dual occupancy is to comply with the requirements of the Healy Heights Covenant Stage 3.7, a duplex and city of Mount Isa Planning Scheme 2020. Number two is the dual occupancy is to be designed in such a way that each unit faces a separate road frontage. And number three, access for each unit of the dual occupancy must be obtained for separate road frontages. Approval is based on the following grounds. This proposal replaces one of the dual occupancy lots within the estate that has been developed with a single dwelling, and that dot point two, the allotment is a corner allotment and can accommodate separate frontages for each unit.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Can I get a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
I think councillor Coghlan was too quick. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
No, I think the, Madam Mayor, that the, uh, the variation is in line with previous changes to other blocks around the estate, and they don't significantly vary from the covenants that are in place. And I think this is more for, for convenience and for just design convenience. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say, like, thank you to the officers that put together the report, because I thought there was a lot of information in it. It was set out really well, easy to read, and had all the information so we could make an informed decision. So thank you to them.
Thank you, councillor Coghlan.
Yeah, I would just like to say that, you know, it's acknowledged that we do have a housing shortage. We're encouraging new builds, and it's good to see higher density living like this happening, and we should make it as easy as we can for people moving forward.
Thank you, councillor McCray. Okay, all those in favour? Councillor Coghlan, or carried? That takes us to item 10.3, which is the councillor's summary report, the 22 LGAQ Bush Council's Convention, 26 to 28 for July 2022. I'm assuming it's councillor McCray, would you like to read the-
I can. Um, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the summary report from councillor Peter McCrae regarding the 2022 LGAQ Bush Council's Convention held in Buckalden, 26 to the 28th of July 2022.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this?
Um, yeah, I will. It was a great opportunity, um, for both the CEO, CEO and myself to network with other councillors and CEOs, um, from around the Bush Councils that have lots of similar issues to ourselves, such as housing, et cetera. Um, it was great that I got invited to, um, speak at one of the sessions. It was called, um, Is The Heart Of The Bush Dying?, talking about, um, how to encourage people to volunteer. So I was able to discuss, um, how this issue is affecting our community groups and some of the actions Mount Isa City Council is taking to address that. Um, I was also able to extend the, um, invitation for everyone there to visit us in our 100 year next year as well, so I took that opportunity.
Fantastic. Thank you. If there's no other, uh, comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item 10.4, which is advertising in the new newspapers. Um, would someone like to put forward the officer's recommendation?
I would. I'd like to move that council agreed to publish half-page ads once a month in the North West Weekly.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Coglan? Coglan.
Councillor Coglan.
Sorry.
Um, pimp, uh, councillor McCrae, would you like to, um, speak on behalf of this motion?
Um, yeah, I'd just like to acknowledge that, um, I don't have a conflict of interest with this before I speak as it is, is a free paper. Um, it's, I think we can all acknowledge that there's been a lack of, um, communication options available to us with, um, North West Star going out of print. So it's great that we have another printed paper in town. I know council, um, you know, is looking to utilise it and I'm sure lots of other businesses will, will use it to disseminate information throughout the community. So I'd like to, um, congratulate the people organising the paper on, um, yeah, bringing this to us and, yeah, I just think it's something that we should support.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Is there any other comments on this one?
I'd just like to say it has been very, very well received in the, um, in the community and it is, um, so good for people that aren't on Facebook, aren't, um, on computers all the time. So not only our elderly part in our community, but a lot of other people like just sitting down and being able to read a paper. And also the fact that there's now the chance for little kids to see themselves in the paper, I think is a great thing for the community. And I'd just like to urge community groups and, and sporting groups, like, to get the news to the newspapers so that, um, it can keep getting bigger and better.
Thank you councillor Coglan. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, through the chair, thanks Madam Mayor. Um, I, I, uh, fully support the motion, um, uh, to support the newspaper. I think, um, I'd, I'd like to commend the Matt who's here today, Matt Nichol, for his efforts and energy in, in getting this up and running, um. And, uh, I, I think it is being well received and as councillor Coglan's pointed out, it, it certainly fills a, a great gap for us. And I think we have some great synergies with the paper between council and getting our messages to the public. Um, thank you.
Yeah, and, um, do we actually promote the, the North West Weekly on our Facebook page? Do we? I wonder if that's something we could do, just to let people know it's out there and it's free to pick up. Um, I also think we should be encouraging businesses to, um, advertise in this North West Weekly because obviously it is almost a community service at the moment for us to be able to know when, um, even just when deaths are happening and funerals, which has been a real concern for a lot of people. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, it's great to see a new paper out and, uh, I hope, I wish it every success. And, uh, with no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us now to, jumped ahead. 5 point, uh, 10.5, which is the 126 LGAQ Annual Conference from the 17th to 19th of October 2022. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that councillors represented at the Local Government Association of Queensland LGAQ Annual Conference to be held in Cairns from the 17th to the 19th of October 2022 by Mayor councillor Danielle Slade and councillor Peter McCrae.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Uh, Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Uh, just to say, Madam Mayor, that I think it's valuable that, um, we have representation, um, particularly a cross-section of representation from the council, yourself and a councillor, um, as a minimum to go to these conferences, um, to keep us, you know, um, at the cutting edge of, um, of council, um, activities and, and council sort of, um, science. So, uh, yeah, I, I fully support the motion again.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, sorry, uh, Madam Mayor, through the chair, um, I'd just like to ask the CEO, is, is it possible we can, um, resubmit those policies that we did at the last conference or we, we can't do that?
Through you, Madam Mayor, no. Um, the motions process is pretty well, um, i- it's locked. So at the moment, um, I think I let councillors know last week or the week before that councillor McCrae's, um, notice of motion has been moulded in a bit with, uh, Cassary Coast.
Yeah.
So that, that's forming one at the moment. So we've missed the process, um, on any at this point.
Thank you.
Yeah, but that, that's also your motion went straight to the OIA Parliamentary Committee and they've actually put, I think they put it on their website?
Yep.
So that's, that's a good outcome.
And through the chair, I think we've still got two other motions up to present.
Yep. Okay, alright. Uh, if there's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us to 10.6, which is the proposed ordinary meeting date change for October 2022. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I would. I'd like to move that council approved the proposed ordinary meeting date from Wednesday the 19th of October 2022 to Wednesday the 26th of October 2022 commencing at 9am at the council chambers, West Street, Mount Isa.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Uh, any comments on this one?
Um, this is just moving the meeting so that when we're away at LGAQ, um, the ordinary meeting doesn't happen and we're just postponing it the following week.
Thank you.
Uh, just a note, Madam Mayor, um, that, um, I had previously booked holidays around the original meeting date, so now I'll be, um, away from town on the 26th of October, but I am happy to patch in, so I'll just, um, make councillors aware of that. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you for that Deputy Mayor. Alright, all those in favour? And that's carried. 10.7, Mount Isa Christmas and New Year, um, closed down for 22, 23. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I can. Um, I'd like to move that council support closing the administration office, library, works depot, batch plant and material sales office from close of business on 12pm midday Friday the 23rd of December 2022, and to reopen on Tuesday the 3rd of January 2023 on the following grounds: Departments that deliver essential services, i.e. waste management, water and sewer and infrastructure services, will have skeleton crews rostered on and on-call over the Christmas, New Year period to cover any emergencies and to provide essential services to the city. Directors to determine sufficient support staff for the rostered skeleton crew as required. Other than stat- statutory holidays, time taken off by staff during this period will be either flex time, RDO, annual leave or a combination of both, and appropriate advertising will be arranged.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Stratton.
Thank you councillor Stratton. Uh, councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Um, this is the, a formality that we're going through. We, we usually follow this process every year, so it's just formalising it so everyone knows what's going on.
Thank you. No other comments? All those in favour? And that's carried. Uh, the next one is 10.8, which is People Culture Safety Overview Report for April, July 2022. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council receives and accepts the April to July 2022 People Culture Safety Report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, just, um, I, I think this is a great report, Madam Mayor. Um, it certainly seems to be taking, um, shape, um, every month we receive it. So, um, there's a lot of information in here, um, and it summarises, um, a lot about, um, you know, how we're managing staff and the number of staff we have and those sorts of things, um. So at, um, July 2022, we had 211, um, headcount, um, total numbers of staff, um, and in, and we had labour hire, um, which I believe is part of that, 211 or 15.5, um. There's an outline of the vacancies there, there's 27 and one active vacancy. Um, I'm, I'm appreciative of our gender, um, breakup there, the males 116 and females are, um, uh, 95. Just lost my place a little bit here, um. Yeah, um. Let's see, there's a, a good range of training happening, um, in amongst the staff and I think it's, it's great to see that and, um, see it analysed in the, in the way that it is. It, it'd probably be good to note the number of, um, people that are actually going through those trainings, but, uh, that might be an addition down the track I could, I could, um, suggest. Um, and we move on to the, um, the casual cause, which is noted down there, um, and shows the amount of money that is being raised by staff, um, across various charities, so that's great. Um, Adam Cloyer has, um, received 10 years, um, Service Achievement Award for working water and sewer, so, um, that's great. And, um, there's, uh, the workplace health and safety, um, I think it's, uh, worth highlighting there that there were zero injuries during July. Um, and total incidents seem to be down, which is, um, which is down to 10. Um, and I think that's probably it from me, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. If there's no more comments? All those in favour? And that's carried. So that now takes us into, um, corporate and community services reports. 11.1 Finance Overview Report for July 2022. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, thanks Madam Mayor. I'll move, um, that council receives and accepts the July 2022 Finance Overview Report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, uh, July is the, um, first month of the year, um, and, and I think there's a fair bit of fluctuation between last year and this year in there. So, um, i- i- they're early figures for the year and, um, I think, uh, we should take them as, as reflective of that. Um, however, um, you know, having said that, we, um, we, uh, you know, have reasonable revenue income and, um, we're up a little bit there on budget and also the expenses are down, so that places us in a good, good position, um. But as I said, these figures are, uh, um, you know, they'll, they'll flatten out a bit in August and September and we'll see a much more realistic, um, 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 activity of council in the budget. Um, borrowings are, um, under 19 million now. Um, now we haven't borrowed anything from council, I'll just point out since, uh, by council since 2013. Um, so, uh, that's, um, it's good that we continue to pay that down. Um, and, uh, I think it's worth pointing out that there was a, an extension to the, um, the water rates that went out. We had to extend that for three weeks, um. Um, just in, because of, um, administrative, um, uh, mis- uh, not mistakes, but administrative, um, inconsistencies that we had to deal with, so, uh, we, um, we feel that the community will be appreciative of that. Uh, thanks Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments on that one?
Yeah, so I've just got one question for the financial, uh, sustainability that, is it just a timing issue? That negative 576% on the financial liability ratio?
Through the chair, absolutely right. That is just a timing issue. So it's the start of the year, a lot of these ratios. In fact, we don't even, we haven't even calculated an asset sustainability ratio because it's too early. One month of trading is not a lot. So you do see these results, uh, present in a skewed manner.
Thank you.
Thank, thanks Jolaya. Okay, so if there's no other comments? Questions? All those in favour? That's carried. That takes us now to 11.2, which is the Corporate Services Overview Report for June and July 2022. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Uh, yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor. Council receives and accepts the June 2022 and July 2022 Corporate Services Overview Report as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of that motion?
Uh, thanks Madam Mayor. So, um, just outlines our telephones, emails, uh, calls and emails and letters and that, um, as presented, um. We're down a bit in July, um, on, um, telephone calls received, which is our main, um, main access to council. Um, they're out, outlined there, the departments that are receiving those. Uh, I note that our answered calls is, um, has improved on June. It was around about 20% about, for, um, unanswered call, but it's come into 15%, um, and I've been discussing with the director of finance and, um, corporate services that I'd like to see that, um, come in a bit more if we, if we can work on it. But we believe that'll happen with the take-up of the, the ERP later in the year, so. Um, that's all, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favour? That's carried. That now takes us to 11.3, which is the Economic and Community Development Overview Report for June and July for 2022. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yes, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the June 2022 and July 2022 Economic and Community Development Overview Report.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Bowick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Um, yeah, I would. I would just like to say that this report is very full. The team in there has been busy with, um, you know, Queensland Day, Pet Day, closely followed by Isa Street Festival. I would just like to congratulate that team on Isa Stre- Street Festival. Um, you know, it was a bit of a stressful situation with, um, Daryl Braithwaite becoming sick on the day. They were able to sort that out. Um, I think everyone had a great time. The community really embraced the event and, you know, we look forward to having it again next year. That team's already working on things for the 100 years. Um, that's going really well. There's an upcoming Citizenship Day on the 17th of September, and then the next event after that will be Christmas Carols on the 3rd of December. There is a lot in there.
There is.
I could talk all day. Oh my God, I will not.
Um, any other comments on, or questions on this one?
I'll just comment, Madam Mayor, that, uh, I concur with councillor McCrae. The, um, the team is very busy and they are achieving a lot, I believe. So, um, uh, full marks to the director and also the team that's, um, that's running them.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. No more comments? All those in favour? And that's carried. That brings us to 11.4, which is the Library Overview Report for June and July 2022. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yes, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the June 2022 and July 2022 Library Overview Report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion, please?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Um, yeah, I'd just like to reiterate, um, once again, this month that the library always has heaps of great, um, educational activities. I see there's been a Minecraft tournament back in July, um, that's related to STEM subjects. There's been, um, National Reconciliation Week going on in there. The Computer Literacy Programme's been running and other, um, the library's helped out with other promotional activities such as they had a stall at Welcoming Babies' Day. Um, one recommendation that, um, I did make at the inform- informal briefing is perhaps we could start sharing the library Facebook page on our general Facebook page. I know June, July school holidays were extremely busy with heaps of great activities. Um, we'll also have the same going on in September, just to let the community, I mean, I know they get booked out anyway, but, um, it'd be good to let more people know what's actually going on in the library. So if we could make that linkage between those Facebooks pages, that would be perfect.
Definitely. Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. So that takes us to item 11.5, which is the, did I skip one? No. Um, which is Splashes Overview Report, July 2022. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
I'll move that the council receives and accepts the July 2022 Splashes Overview, Overview Report as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion, please?
Stratton.
Thank you councillor Stratton. Councillor Coglan, would you like to speak on behalf of this?
Oh, just warming up and now again, so, um, I'd say there's going to be a lot more patronage at Pearl. Also, a lot of the schools are starting their swimming carnivals for the end of the year. And, um, in that, I think tomorrow is the Good Shepherd Swimming Carnival and I'd just like to say, go Benjamin House. Um, I hope they have another victory. And, um, yes, that's all.
No bias there.
Do you have a conflict of interest here councillor Coglan?
Could have one, yes.
Any other comments on, on this one? All right, all those in favour, and that's carried. That takes us now to um eleven point six, which is the concession to waiver water consumption charges. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council approves a concession to waiver water consumption charges issued to property assessment zero four four two eight dash zero 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 dash zero 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 for the two oh two one uh dash two thousand and twenty two financial period as per sections one one nine, one twenty, one B one and one twenty one C, one twenty one A and one twenty two one A of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve due to the property owner being a charitable, not-for-profit organisation that provides an essential healthcare service to Mount Isa and surrounding communities to the value of thirty eight thousand six hundred and eight dollars. And the council agrees that payment of the water consumption charges for the two thousand and twenty one slash two thousand and twenty two financial period will cause financial hardship, which in turn could impact on the delivery of critical services provided to the community by this organisation. And the council further approves to waiver interest charges accrued on the outstanding charges up to thirty one, uh thirty first of the eighth, two thousand and twenty two for six hundred and forty six dollars and thirty six cents and to hold interest on the outstanding rate notice issued twenty first of the third, twenty twenty two until paid in full.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
Stratten.
Thank you councillor Stratten, uh Deputy Mayor would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, um the non-profit charity uh group in question is the RFDS who um, I don't think I need to um outline the, the sort of services and support they provide to not only Mount Isa but this whole region. Um, they are also um investing significant funds through grants admittedly, but um they're, they'll no doubt be investing some of their own donations into uh the new facility over the next sort of twelve months to two years out at the airport. Um, and they've always, always worked very well and um communicated well with council. So um, I believe with this particular one, um they, they're subject to a um a concealed leak water consumption policy and, and we would have to write off um, you know, something like eighty percent or seventy to eighty percent of the um amount in any case. Um, so we're just taking it that step further by um, um uh reducing the um, the rates uh as we have done with a number of other nonprofits um for the value of around about ten thousand dollars. Um, so uh, yeah, I'd probably support the motion, thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, is there any other comments on this one?
I think at this time it does highlight the fact that to households and businesses in Mount Isa that everyone needs to be vigilant on their water usage and if they do notice that they are, experience a higher um you know, higher usage, that they need to look at it straight away, otherwise it can go, well, bill to quite a, a big bill. So just a, a shout out to businesses and households to keep an eye on your water usage.
Thank you councillor Coglan, and I guess we can't bring these smart water meters soon enough. That'll, that hopefully will help a lot of residents and businesses in the future.
Sorry, so was it the first option or the second option?
First one.
First one, okay.
Okay, so any other comments, all those in favour? And who, uh, did the ones against, wanna record it or just, just against?
No, I, I mean, my recommendation is we go with the um, with the second, second o- 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 option because that's the policy that we have in place for concealed water leak. So I, I, I just think, excuse me, that we're um, we're probably opening up a can of worms if, if, if we allow the full uh reduction to, to occur.
Thank you councillor Tully, and um that was carried, I didn't miss that one.
Against.
No.
Can we call a division?
Yep.
Yeah, I'd like to call a division.
Okay. Re-vote again, all those in favour? Uh, so Deputy Mayor, councillor Stratten and Danielle Slade are four. And you've changed your vote councillor Coglan?
Yes, I have.
So, and councillor Coglan, councillor Tully and councillor McCrae, that's a, that's a uh dead heat, so um I'll vote again to um carry that motion. Okay, so that takes us now through to um the next one, which is eleven point seven, which is Rates and Charges Concession um for fifteen identified property assessments on Old Micah Creek Road, so we have um one council leaving, thank you councillor Stratten. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation please?
I'll, I'll move, Madam Mayor.
Ready to read a lot.
Uh, a recommendation that uh council extinguishes uh ordinary meeting uh thirty seventh, seventh, twenty twenty two um which uh states that council applies a ten percent discount to the water account of properties both to the water charge and the volumetric charge uh impacted by a boil water alert for the period of the property is impacted. The discount is to be applied to the account at the time billing and is to commence from the first of July twenty twenty two due to the concession being placed incorrectly and not in accordance with the Local Government Act two thousand and nine and as per the requirements of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve. And that council re-grants the concession of ten percent on the water meter access charge and water consumption charges on the schedule of fifteen identified property assessments for the period the property is impacted by the boil water alert under sections one one nine, one twenty C, one twenty one A and one twenty two one B of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve due to the financial impact that the payment of these charges will cause, the identified rate payers commencing from the first of July twenty twenty two. And the council further approves that this concession remains in place on the schedule of the fifteen identified property assessments on Old Micah Creek Road until such time that the boiled water alert is removed by council, thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, can I get a second, a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully, um Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, it sounded like a lot in that recommendation, Madam Mayor, but it was actually just to correct an error from the meeting of the um, of July um that um it was incorrectly applied in the recommendation, so this is to correct that, thank you.
Thank you, there's no more comments, all those in favour? Councillor Coglan, sorry, and that's carried, and we'll welcome back councillor Stratten. And that takes us to eleven point eight, which is the North Queensland Sports Foundation twenty twenty two North Queensland Sports Star Awards uh councillor delegation. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Um, yes, I'd like to move that council delegates councillor Peter McCrae and councillor Paul Stratten to assess the local nominations for the twenty twenty two North Queensland Sports Star Awards and select one nominee per category as council submission to the North Queensland Sports Foundation. Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay, would someone else like to move?
Yeah, um, thanks Madam Mayor, uh the recommendation that council delegates councillor Peter McCrae and councillor Paul Stratten to assess the local nominations for the two thousand and twenty two North Queensland Sports Star Awards and select one nominee per category as council submissions to the North Queensland Sports Foundation.
Thank you councillor Tully, uh can I get a second for that motion?
Yeah, second, Bowe.
Thank you, councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Oh, no, thank you.
Um, it is just saying that we will go through the um nominations with the people in the department um at Sport and Rec, just our Sport and Rec Department to assess um who we're going to put forward to the North Queensland Sports Foundation for the awards night.
Thank you.
Could I ask through the chair please, um how do people nominate this? Or do you just pick them, or is there a nomination process?
There's a nomination process that have gone out, they will be collected, um we go through them. It, it's um not a difficult process because there's a criteria, whether it's um state, national, international representation. Um, you know, what, what games they've attended, what placings they've got, so um, yeah.
How, how has this, yeah, just through the chair, how has it gone out, like how do people know about it? Like is there something on the council website or is it through our media or?
Usually it's through the website and media.
It says it up there, executive summary. Council pack.
So if people want to nominate, they should just get onto the council website and, and um look for the nomination forms or the process it goes through.
It happens tomorrow.
Yeah.
Uh, and following that, you can go to the North Queensland uh Sports Foundation webpage as well, and they have it there as well.
I think you're putting your hand up.
No.
My days are over.
Okay, if there's no more comments, all those in favour, and that's carried. That takes us now to um eleven point nine, which is Mount Isa, Mount Isa Day for the twenty fourth of February twenty twenty three. The application for the appointment of the Mount Isa Day Bank Holiday. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yes, I'd like to move that council endorsed the twenty fourth of February twenty twenty three, which is the Friday, as a nominated date for the twenty twenty three Mount Isa Day holiday to occur.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you councillor Stratten, councillor McCrae would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Um, yeah, I'd just like to note that this is actually going to be um known as a special holiday rather than a public holiday. So um, I note in the budget applications it's got um employee entitlements and public holiday awards and such, but um being a special holiday, it's a little bit hard to find out who actually gets the holiday and what that entails. But um, the, the description is it is not a public holiday, it's a special holiday.
Thank you.
So, so what does that mean for Mount Isa on that day? Who gets the holiday?
Good question.
Well, we're hoping that it's schools and um.
We're assuming it's schools, but whether it's teachers, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I tried to research it, but there's, it's very difficult to find um information on special holidays. Um, if you go to the Queensland Government website, there's a whole list of places having special holidays this year for twenty twenty two, but it doesn't actually outline who actually gets the holiday, so we're hoping to investigate that further.
Yep.
So, sorry, through, through the chair, so should we be voting on something that we don't really know about?
What, what we're hoping to do is um, um the Thursday, the twenty third of February twenty twenty three is a hundred years and we wanted to have a day off to signify that. We, we picked the Friday because we believe that we'll probably have something on Thursday night and maybe something on Friday as well. And uh that just makes it easier for if the schools and, and businesses want to get involved and give their staff that time off makes it easier because it's just a long weekend, so whatever they get, we're sort of right behind.
You know, I understand all that, but I'm just concerned that businesses don't know whether it's a public holiday or it's just a holiday.
I, I can confirm it's definitely not a public holiday. That is, that is the definition, not a public holiday.
Through the chair, um, um, I was just asked to see, are you, are you aware of the process? We, this is an applica- endorsement of an application for the holiday, it's not actually approving it, but um, we, is the process um include a bit of work with the community around this?
Through you Madam Mayor, through you Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm, I'm not completely sure. Um, it may be this report needs to come back to council, um because I'm aware that council did not want the word founders in there either. Um, and it's also got down there a bank holiday. I, I want to be very cautious because this sends a message to business um about what, if it is a special holiday or just a Mount Isa Day and that's what it's called, that fits in okay and you don't have to do a lot, but this is a bit not dissimilar to what council dealt with at last council meeting, which was show days for example.
Except sho- show day is a public holiday.
I'm agreeing with you, I'm agreeing. We've just got to be very careful here that's uh businesses don't suddenly think they're paying staff double time or whatever.
Yeah, through the chair, that's why I sort of tried to re- research it because through the report it does mention bank holiday, special holiday and there wasn't a great definition as to what each one was and what that actually meant. All I could get through my own research was to clarify that it's not a public holiday.
Oh, through the chair, oh sorry.
In fact councillors, I'd appreciate it if we can bring this back because we've also got Mount Isa City Council Leave Policy written down there as a policy one. Um, and I think that's probably opening up a, a door where we don't want to open up a door.
Through the chair, I won't be supporting the motion, there's not enough information and also I don't agree with it being a school holiday myself.
We'll just take it off.
Hmm.
So, sorry, through you Madam Mayor, can we go back to, I think that was moved by McCrae, seconded by Stratten?
Yep.
It, you might want to do the same again, uh let it fail and then go with the, uh someone um foreshadow that they will be um uh putting up the um, the alternate recommendation that council does not endorse at this stage.
Okay, so any comments?
Madam Mayor, just uh, I, I think we, uh when it comes back as a report, I think we should be flagging with the community that we are applying for it, if it gets endorsed, but um I think the sooner we do that, even if we don't know the, the outcome. Um, so I don't, I, I presume it's fairly easy to get, once you have a decent application, to get approved, but um I think we should be flagging with.
Yeah, through the chair, I think it's important that we do let the community know, but we need to also know whether it's a public holiday or just a holiday, because no use going out and saying that, well, it's going to be a public holiday and then businesses have to pay their people the, uh whatever, the, you know, the, the certain thing, so I mean, it's point is going and telling them that we're going to have a holiday, but we don't know what sort of holiday it is.
Okay, so we foreshadow that this may um not be voted for, may not pass. And there may be an alternative recommendation, so all those in favour? Okay, so. Oh, did I, did I just not foreshadow that? Oh, someone else, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I'll foreshadow that uh there would be an alternative motion, but I think it needs to go back for more research to um, to the officers.
Okay, now we, now we vote?
Um, well, I moved the alternate motion.
Phil just did.
I did, didn't I?
So we're, we're.
And then got voted down and then Phil foreshadowed.
And we failed it.
Uh, my motion is that uh we withdraw the paper and that um it comes back um at, at another meeting.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Uh, my motion is that uh we withdraw the paper today um for um eleven point nine and that we bring it back to council at a future meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
But also add that because we definitely want to come back to it.
Yeah, yeah, I think through the chair, I think it's important that we do, do recognise some sort of holiday, but we need to understand what sort of holiday it is before we do that.
Yep.
Okay, well, I'll go back to a new motion if you like, yeah. Yeah, I'll move that council does not endorse twenty fourth of February two thousand and twenty three Friday as a nominated date for the two thousand and twenty three Mount Isa Day holiday to occur. Oh, yeah, and, yeah, to add to that, that a further report, the um report brought back to council with more information.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, can I get a second for that motion? Thank you councillor Tully, and I think we've already made our comments, all those in favour, and that's carried. That now brings us to item eleven point ten, which is the outcome of the Department of Environment and Science Compliance Inspection of Mount Isa Landfill. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yes, through the chair, Madam Mayor, the council receives and notes the outcome of the March twenty twenty two compliance inspection by the Department of Environmental Science and supports ongoing management of the waste services to maintain compliance with their environmental authority.
Thank you councillor Stratten, can I get a second for that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you councillor McCrae, councillor Stratten would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yeah, just a bit of executive summary there, an outcome letter was received on the third of August twenty twenty two from the Department of Environment and Science regarding the three potential non-compliances and one matter of concern identified during the twenty two March twenty twenty two compliance inspection of the Mount Isa landfill. The department has decided to take no further action on the non-compliances and considers the matter's closed.
Thank you, any comments on this one?
Now, that's a good result, Madam Mayor, thank you.
All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. So now that takes us into twelve, Infrastructure Services Reports, twelve point one, Major Projects Overview Report. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation please?
Uh, thank you Madam Mayor, um recommendation that council receives and accepts the. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, recommendation that council receives and accepts the July 2022 major projects overview report as presented.
Thank you, councillor Tully, can I get a second for that motion?
Streton.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, yeah, just the Buchanan Park bluestone blocks are completed. Madam Mayor and Mr. Katter opened those over radio weekend. The Kenwell toilets are complete, except the, we're just waiting on Ergon to hook up the transfer from the sewer, from the sewerage into the sewer. The shade structure over the Kenwell basketball court and the transmission park and sunset park upgrades are completed. The family fun park is underway, the civil contract's been awarded. The shade is going over this week, I pulled up and had a look there yesterday, and all works is going, I'd say they'll probably be finished that by the end of the week, but completion is still set for November this year.
Thank you, councillor Tully, is there any other comments or questions on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. 12.2, water and sewerage overview report, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, the council receives and accepts the June, July 2022 water and sewerage overview report.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Councillor Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yes, I suppose everybody's wondering where their smart meters are, but there's a bit of a light at the end of the tunnel. Timeframes for the delivery of the smart meters remain current, that is, the bulk of the meters, 3,900 approximately, will be available ex factory at the end of August, but the remainder available ex factory at the end of October. All going to plan, hopefully we'll see some action out of these meters by Christmas time.
Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us now to 12.3, which is the DWQMP action plan update. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I think, sure, mate, thanks, mate. Council accepts or receives the July 2022 Mount Isa drinking water service audit quarterly progress report and note the progress of the implementation of the approved action plan as detailed in the report.
Thank you, councillor Tully, can I get a second for that motion?
Streton.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. The table summarises the progress with the appendix G of the Department of Water. Tatch report provides details of each recommendation, the adopted action, including priority and timeframe for completion, plus status comments against each action. So this is just a action plan of what we're required to do and where we are with what we are doing, so, yeah, I think it's important that we follow the guidelines and, yeah, we continue with that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. 12.4, which is the purchase of a Caterpillar 963K waste handler. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, recommend that council purchase the Caterpillar 963K waste handler for $650,000 excluding GST in place of the council's existing D7 waste handler that has exceeded its useful life.
Second, Barwick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Fleet Services has gone through a market through local buyer to 15 providers and received quotes back from Hastings, Deering and Libor Australia. The Libor is lighter and less powerful than the Caterpillar 963, and is more expensive at $66700 excluding GST, and the 936 is fit for purpose and is being used by the Bulge Shire at the moment, and from all reports, they're very satisfied with their purchase. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tully, any other comments on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. 12.5, which is a quest for single supplier of fishing pontoon, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council accepts the quotation from Superior Industrial to supply and install the fishing pontoon at Lake Windah for the quoted price of $78,322.13 including GST, $71,201.93 excluding GST. On the basis there is only one supplier who is reasonably available, and that because of the specialised nature of the services that are sought, it would be impractical to invite further quotes.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Tully. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I believe there's a contractor that's working for another body here, installing a similar pontoon, so this is just to try and work off the back of that and possibly get some savings for council, and also save us a lot of administrative drama in trying to procure another contractor. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other comments? All those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, that brings us into general business, which we have none, and... Okay, so we are now closed for a brief adjournment, and we will be reopening in confidential closed session, so thanks everybody for your attendance this morning, really appreciate it.
Can you get going?
Yep.
Would someone like to move the recommendation that council considers the following confidential reports in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section 254j of the Local Government Regulation 2012, 14.1, the material recovery facility, MRF, RDT engineering deed of agreement, 14.2, Riversley Road pavement improvements, 14.3, North Queensland Sports Foundation three-year resource and performance agreement. Can I get someone to move that motion please?
Move, Barwick.
Can I get a second after that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully. All those in favour? That's correct. We are now...
Move the motion that council moves out of closed council into open council. 14 consideration of confidential business items. 14.1 material recovery facility MRF RDT engineering deed of agreement. 14.2 Riversley Road pavement improvements. 14.3 North Queensland Sport Foundation three year resource and performance agreement. Would someone like to move that motion?
Move, Barwick.
Second councillor Tully, thank you, all those in favour. And that's carried and we are now back in open council. That brings us to item 14.1. Which is the material recovery facility, the MRF RDT engineering deed of agreement. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move it, madam me. Council approves execution of the deed of agreement with RDT engineering in response to the extension.
Can I stop you there? Just that, that piece of paper?
Oh, I thought we had to move that.
Oh, no, but the...
Sorry, yes, you're right.
Oh, was it right?
Yeah, so you keep going.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
To the extension of time claim date of 29th of June 2022. That's right.
Okay, and can I get a second for that motion?
McCray.
Or you just do the other one.
Because we're getting foreshadowed. So would someone like to comment?
I'll foreshadow a recommendation around the resolving end of the deed. Thanks to you.
Thank you, all those in favour. Okay, due to no votes, there is a foreshadow that an alternative recommendation be put forward. Would someone like to move that?
I'll move that council resolves to enter into a deed with RDT Engineering Proprietary Limited substantively in the terms of the form attached to the recommendation report and delegates authority to the chief executive officer. Attached to the recommendation report and delegates authority to the chief executive officer to negotiate, finalise and enter into the deed.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, can I go a second for that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Thank you councillor Coghlan, all those in favour.
Can I just ask a question, where are we going to do? End?
That was cut out, through you Madam Mayor, that was cut out in the recommendation. That council removed, accepts the recommendation. Resolves to enter into a deed with RDT Engineering Proprietary Limited substantively. Of the form attached to the recommendation, delegates authority to the CEO, opposite to negotiate.
That, that's what I read.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so, sorry, I'm just, I'm a bit slow. So, we still are working with this deed of agreement with the date on it, is that correct? But we've just accepted the deed and for you to finalise it. Okay, sorry.
Okay, second, let's do that again, all those in favour. And that's carried. Did you want your vote recorded councillor Tully?
And McCray.
Thank you. And that takes us now to item fourteen point two, which is the Riversley Road pavement improvements, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Recommend that council award the contract RFT twenty twenty two dash seventy two T to Durack Civil Proprietary Limited. For the sum of one million five hundred and ninety one thousand and eighty four dollars nineteen cents excluding GST for the pavement and ceiling works on Riversley Road.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion please?
Streton.
Thank you councillor Streton, okay, all those in favour. And that's carried. That takes us to the last one, which is fourteen point three, which is North Queensland Sports Foundation three year resource and performance agreement, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'd like to move that council approves the renewal of the resource and performance agreement with the North Queensland Sports Foundation for three years expiring thirtieth of June twenty twenty five. For the total contribution of approximately fifteen thousand three hundred and twenty six dollars and twenty nine cents ex GST for financial assistance. And that council delegates authority to the CEO in accordance with, in accordance with the local government act two thousand and nine to negotiate and finalise any and all matters relating to the resource and performance agreement.
Can I get a second for that motion please?
Streton.
Thank you councillor Streton.
Through the chair, can I call for a division on this one please?
Certainly can. Oh, sorry. All those in favour. And councillor Coghlan, would you like your vote recorded?
I want my vote recorded as a no, no vote.
A division?
Yes, sorry, yes.
Okay, so Deputy Mayor Phil Barwick, councillor Tully, councillor Streton and councillor McCray. Councillor Slade. And against is councillor Coghlan.
Yep.
Okay, so the time is now eleven forty five AM and I now declare the council meeting closed, thanks for everybody.